The case before us tonight is the City Council Resolution R-08-19, Request to Consider Amending Zoning Code to Include Short-Term Rentals in Residential Zones.
Can't hear.
Well, any closer and I'll be swallowing it, so you know, there we go. I'm not saying anything right now, okay. Okay, can everyone hear me now? This is the special session of the Athens City Planning Commission for Case Number 19-07, City Council Resolutions, Resolution R-08-19, Request to Consider Amending Zoning Code to Include Short-Term Rentals in Residential Zones. For anybody who is interested in speaking tonight, please raise your right hand and do you solemnly swear to tell the truth to the Athens Planning Commission? Thank you. Also, when you go to speak to the commission at the podium, come to the podium, announce your name, your address, and then we also have a clipboard for you to sign your name and address as well. Why don't you do that after you speak with, speak to the audience on that. Is there anything that the commissioners would like to say?
Sure, I would. To the members of the commission, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the audience, just to reiterate what the planning commission is charged with, the city council brought forward a resolution to the planning commission to make modifications to the zoning code. The planning commission ultimately has to make a recommendation back to the city council after taking in all sides on it and deliberating on it as to whether or not to accept the modifications as proposed, to completely reject the modifications as proposed, or to make any changes. As it stands now, there are no regulations for short-term rentals inside the Athens City Code, so there's no mechanism to do enforcement. What I would ask tonight, if you're speaking as the, as the member of the administration who is charged with enforcing the law after it's passed, if you have recommendations as to what to, what to do, please share that with this commission so that we can make the best recommendation possible. I don't know that anybody on this panel has a strong opinion on this matter. We certainly heard strong opinions on both sides of this matter, or multiple sides of this matter over the recent weeks, so if you can do the best you can to make recommendations as to how we should go forward, that's really what we're trying to hear this evening. Thank you.
And again, this is a meeting or a session to get resident input on this proposed legislation. We are not voting, we are not voting tonight, this is merely just to get your input. Would someone like to come forth, forward first to the podium? Okay, just go ahead. And again, just announce your name and your address, please, and sign out when you're done. Thank you. We're giving you about three minutes per person on this, three minutes.
My name is Mimi Sherman, I live at 3 North Bay Avenue, and my first question is, what is all this fuss about? On the Airbnb website, there's nine plus than a dozen places in all of Athens that are advertising lease to rent or places for rent. Most of them are already freestanding licensed apartments like mine, and some of them are being, some of them is in rural homes. So my question is, what's the big deal? If anybody wants to answer that, I'd really be like, is there any happening now? Ronnie?
Okay.
Who's asking to open it up? I'm opening it up.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're probably going to get response to you.
But I'm still trying to figure out what the issue is, because I certainly can't figure it out. My personal situation is I have two rental, licensed rental units behind our house that usually are rented to visiting professors, graduate students, they're fully furnished and equipped, so these people come in from, oh, and I get the Fulbright scholars from Egypt or Jordan, people can come in, stay. It's not always less than, you know, it's not always more than a month, sometimes it is. And the rest of them are just weekends where parents are coming to visit their children, want to have their place to interact with their kids, the hotel bed. I have a license, and I would like to know what's going to happen to my license, exactly. Apparently, according to what I've heard, you're going to take away my long-term license, even though I haven't been able to find anything anywhere defining long-term. Ready? Is there? It says there's a, there's a section that says long-term is more than 30 days, I have not been able to find it, so it says 30 days. Anyway, that's my, that's all I have to say, and I just don't understand what else could possibly else about.
Thank you very much. Would someone else like to come up? Yeah, why don't we go ahead and just, if you have an interest to speak, go ahead and form a line behind that gentleman.
I'm trying to use the microphone, too. Hi, I'm Jim Fuller from Sweet Mechanicsburg, Gettysburg State, also known as Athens Village, at 467 Drichland Avenue. We were the first ones to come forward and ask for guidance about how to do a A and B or whatever. We're not on Airbnb, we're on the website. I agree, I mean, if we can't rent a tourist home for longer than 30 days, that is going to be a problem, because there are people who come through Athens who need 60 to 90 days of shelter. And with most of the real estate in town, and also been involved in that game, they're 12-month, you know, leases. So this is something that we, as citizens, can do and show our public face to what a great community Athens is, and make people feel at home, and make people do this. My question is this, as I read it, and I understand these are clever things, you can only have a tourism home if you're within 250 feet of your primary residence. My question is this, what happens when somebody wants to sell their primary residence? And what happened to those people who thought they were doing a good thing, who bought property to have a tourism home, and they're without 250 feet? These are all concerns, and being on City Council a long time ago, Nancy Davis was still not married to George, it's been that long ago. You know, I understand the desires of council to come up with codification of rules, but Athens is so unique in so many ways. And trust us, we're the ones paying the taxes each quarter on these places, and on the tax page it has long-term renters. So I think that maybe we're getting the dog from the wrong end, I don't know, but that's one of the things we say around here, okay? Have you had your mind?
It's a great one.
Good, it's one of the called Fullerism around here, okay? You're writing it down?
Yeah.
But that's all I have to say, I mean, these are, these are great things to bring up, but people owning their homes to other people in a community like Athens is not a bad thing. And all of a sudden we're changing the rules, I don't know where it came from, like Ms. Sherman, very interesting speaking. You know, I mean, why aren't we being bothered now? You know, we're not doing anything illegal, we're paying our taxes, we're doing this, we're doing that, why is there going to be a change when we paid the investment, not the city of Athens, not asking for any grants or anything else? So that's my point, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Someone else wish to speak?
Another person I knew before she was...
Let's see, gotta find it. Andy, can you move, she's going to move down, I'll have the board.
Okay, so they can sign in afterwards? Sure.
Clipboard will be over here, folks. Stephanie goes for enjoying North Bay. Okay, I will do that. Can you hear me? Okay. I think some of the ones that are doing it, I don't know if there's a defense to what you're doing, but what you have to understand is part of the problem, and some of the ones that are against it, is that they're opening it up. They're opening it up, why? Into R1 areas, and many of the residents are very concerned for that, because they didn't buy in R1s to have a lot of rentals around particularly. And not saying some people can't handle it and do well. I've been a little vocal, and coming to council last night, I've been asked the same questions that you all have asked of the council last night. One was answered, I said, who is going to govern this? And I'm told it's the code office. The code office is overburdened now, so I don't know unless you can hire more, that they're going to be able to make sure of all the Ps and Ts being taken care of and processed. The second one, because we read one other public meetings a time ago, and we asked something, or they, we asked them if they knew what they had, and they didn't, and someone spoke about, all you have to do basically is go on internet and you can find out. So do you know exactly what all is being used as Airbnbs, tourist homes, whatever out there? And if so, are you having them in control of doing what they're supposed to be doing? Because you don't go and open it up wider to something, you don't know what you've got in the first place, or mired, it's like buying one rental and getting 20 for the next year, that's dumb, that's a lot, maybe you've got a full screen of people to work for and be okay. So those are, the one question was answered, the second one, do you know who all has B and B, tourist homes, long-term, or anything like that? That should be found out before you go all the rest of the wedding. Okay, let's see, what's my next one? My big one, my big pain has always been about rentals and parking. You put it in the R1s, you've got parking issues. There is a short street off where I live, no way could they have Airbnbs in there or short-term. There's no off-street parking beyond what the people could live there. So are you going to restrict it to certain R1s, or totally open up R1s? And you have to look at the parking. And I know I see someplace where it says it's going to be same rules as it is for rentals, but I'm not hearing that really. That's what I would expect. I've come before council many times on parking issues. My attitude is, if you buy a rental and can't provide parking, you don't make it rent, because it's just making more load on residents. And I think, what R1s are you open to? That is my other question. Do you have a power design? Okay, you done three?
Thank you very much. Someone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Alyssa Bernstein, I live in one of the lovely residential neighborhoods. Been living here for 17 years, my husband was raised here from childhood. And I love the character of Athens, which already is changing. I don't want the feelings of community, safety, neighborhoods that are composed of long-term residents, whether they own them or they have long-term rental leases. I don't want that to change significantly. And if you do a little bit of research, do a little bit of research online about Airbnbs and how they have impact on communities, you find out, they can have huge impacts. And if Airbnbs become prohibited in all of the residential areas, it's going to transform this town. And one of the reasons why some of the activists of having Airbnbs want to be able is because they know people want to come to Athens, because Athens is such a wonderful place. But we want Athens to remain a wonderful place. Now, there may be a way to accommodate the reasonable interest on both sides of the issue, but it's going to take some research, including research into what has happened in other communities, and what kinds of legislation was passed to regulate in different communities. There's been a very strong protest against Airbnbs in many communities around the world, which has led to legislation involving restrictions. I have not done the research, I don't know the specifics, I can't make specific recommendations, but this is a potentially strongly significant step. Allowing Airbnbs in all the residential communities could potentially, according to what I have read, and quite rapidly, put a very strong upward pressure on rents. Already, rents are too high, they're too high for shops, which are getting turned into out of business, on Court Street and so forth, they're already high for students and low-income people in this town, this is an issue that was discussed in the narrow candidates debates. Airbnbs can drive up rents very rapidly, because when the landlords who wants to do short-term rentals can get a lot of money for it. And so if they can get a lot of money for short-term rentals, and they're thinking just in terms of money, they'll have a very strong motivation not to, to accept lower prices for their long-term rentals. They may either decide not to lease for the long-term to renters at all, or to lease for all the other conditions, they get much higher rents. And that could be a terrible consequence for that person.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to sign out. Someone else wish to speak? Sir, come on.
First of all, it's a procedure which has gone by, this was, I've already submitted to the planning commission, they asked for a responsible 16 to 20 days, for perhaps one of the council, sorry, planning council responded, yeah?
Yeah.
No?
No.
Okay, the legislation's up and running, the draft, which is where it just came, legislation's up and running. Let me look at a couple of things. Oh, was it on? No, it's not on, they just need to get it out of their mouth. Sorry. Let's look at some of the things in the post. Short-term rental can't have any license, and a tourist home... Oh, yes, one of the requirements is, that the guest room office, you have to move 29 out of the room that has a greater than 70 feet square feet of floor space. Hey, that's seven feet by 10. If you want to add people, all you have to do is add 29 square feet per person. So these are not exactly, lose the track of a lot of people that figure out, say, I have parents, students, who might like to try to... That's one of the things that's going to appear. Then, a little bit further, and you have to, of course, comply with all the parking regulations which are possible. As we said, it doesn't affect very much on the property, because you can't park your whole vehicle, and it's not a truck. The next one is, a tourist home must be... Oh, they can't hear me, I'm sorry. A tourist home must be within 200 feet radius of the operator's primary residence occupied or owned 51 percent of the year by the owner. Owner can be a family trust or limited liability corporation. The operator's having 51 percent trust or a fellow trust of the operator. There's a problem with that, I can still, I'll see, they have to be licensed, you suppose if you have only one license. Look, when this is working, I can have the license for three different places, it doesn't take... So there's another problem, you're going to be forking up LLCs, whatever that means in this town. So, there's several problems with the legislation to begin with.
Okay. We'll have to cut, George, you've had your allotted three minutes, okay?
Well, my recommendation is constantly, everybody needs to look at the same character again, because it's been rushed through and leads to no character, consequences.
Thank you very much. If you want to come here and sign, somebody else like to speak, and speak close to the microphone?
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Prenderon, I live at 220 East State Street. For any of you who have been following this adventure for the last year or so, you probably saw our daughter Davis do most of the speaking and the talking. I thought that I would come up tonight to give a different perspective, because since 2005, I have been traveling every week for business, I'm a consultant, I'm usually working in some other state, some other zip code, some other area code, and I've been renting the Airbnbs for the past several years. I think there's a lot of confusion about what an Airbnb is and is not. There's a B for bed, there's no B for breakfast, so you're not serving anybody any food. And if you're like me, and most people I know stay in an Airbnb, you are super respectful of that person's property. I take the trash out, I know the owners of the places that I've rented, most recently in Modesto, California, and in LA. You clean up that to yourself, you let them know if there are packages that arrive for them, or if there are issues, they sometimes forget certain things that you might need as a traveler, and they will do anything to make your stay really good. And in return, you take care of their property. It would be insane to think you would go in and trash someone's house. We are not planning to rent to anyone under 25, we will not have a party house, we are the second owners at 220 East State Street since the Foster family built it in 1915, we're the second owners. We take really great care of this property, and that's the way we see this going forward. But we believe that there are not enough hotels in Athens, that people don't have places to stay, and when they want to come and see their kids, they're down here to do that, and they spend money, and they add to our community, and they get to know us just like I did in Modesto, California. I knew the owners of the properties, I watched the guy at the one place as he was redecorating his kitchen, I took good care of their properties, that's the kind of thing that we see. We don't want to have party houses here, we don't support that. We have leaded glass in our house, we have beautiful, original wood floors, solid wood doors, glass doorknobs. The last thing that we're going to do is invite a situation where people come in and destroy our property. So I just want to make sure that we change this part, and this is one of those times where we have an amazing community, and things are changing. People don't have places to stay here, there are some really great options for people. And the things that were brought up about parking, we agree, we've gone through this already with parking, we have to make sure that it was our property, we have the property that's required. We are dedicated to this community, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows, people who do Airbnb on a regular basis are all about making things available to people that don't have a place to stay when they come to visit their town. In return, they take care of the property, if they don't, they don't get to stay again. I have to show a picture driver's license every time I stay. Every person who stays in an Airbnb has to be listed. If you don't follow the rules, you're out.
Thank you very much.
So I want to make sure that you know that we are dedicated to making sure this is a good experience for everyone.
Someone else care to speak, please?
...from 129th Avenue, it's an R1 zone, and that's clearly one of my concerns, is the impact of anything like this in the R1 zones. There was a really good article in the ESPN, by Tom Vasquez, in the news, where I think he tried to summarize it, and, well, I'm generally in favor of allowing what the lady described now to be, I'm fearful of the regulations that possibly could develop for that purpose, and they'll have all sorts of adverse impacts. But in Tom's article, he talks about these people having restrictions, in terms of such as, they have to help the resident's questions, have not rented out the room for 30 days, maximum two guest rooms, allow more than two adults per room. I think that's the only ways I've actually seen anything like that, I've been trying to follow this, and I've got a copy of some draft legislation, there's nothing in there about this type of restriction. He goes on to say that there are some other ones called home stay residences in the tour towns, in which someone can rent out a home they own, but don't live in, while the young themselves with the 20 feet of residence. That situation, a maximum three guest room, would be allowed, more than two adults per room. Again, I've never seen this two adults per room description in any of the proposals that I've seen so far. That may be okay. The next level, though, we've heard about parking restrictions. Many of the R1 zones can't take six written cards to reside in the place. Maybe it wouldn't be six people, it's six cards, maybe it would just be three cards, but many of the R1 homes are not designed for that many cards, and so we're going to be really careful about that. So I have serious regulations about our city's ability to be able to enforce this. We've heard already that co-enforcement is an issue, you need to have a code, it is enforceable. Co-enforcement, obviously, can't be fully enforced in code.
Thank you very much. Would someone else like to speak?
My name is Mary Abel, I live at 48th, Athens Boulevard. Mr. Chairman and planning members, thank you for scheduling this public hearing tonight and giving all those people here the opportunity to speak. When I came into this room this evening, I looked around, and I was very happy to see that there was a good number of people here who are interested in this proposal. I'd like you to envision that this room were packed to capacity for about 250 people. All three rooms can hold about 220. And what I would like to present to you tonight is a petition that has been signed by 251 voters across the city of Athens in R1 residential areas, north, south, east, and west, that reads as follows, and this is regarding standalone tourist homes. "We, the undersigned voters of an R1 residential area in the city of Athens, are opposed to a standalone tourist home being at business operation in an R1 zone, and ask that you, the members of the Athens Planning Commission and Athens City Council vote against this proposal." Thank you very much, and I would like to present this to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jack Stocker, I live at 69 Elwood Place. I submitted five simple common sense questions to the council members and the mayor last night.
That or face, not the mic.
Jack Stocker, 69 Elwood. I submitted five common sense questions to the council people and the mayor last night. I was hoping to get those answered this evening, but maybe in the future. Here we go. This is Athens, our town. The regular folks are receptive, inclusive, and tolerant of others. I, like most many of the folks in the R1, chose our neighborhood because of the resident, R1 residential, single-family homes. Yes, we have residents of families, students, and of course, many... Yes, we have lots of families, students, and of course, mainly other occupied homes. With this, even in our neighborhoods that have a mix of students, we have the chance to get to know each other and gain a mutual respect for each other. With these tourist homes, six unrelated people come into our neighborhood for a weekend to party in Athens. Let's face the facts, this is not your typical tourist home town. People come here to drink and party, for the most part. You must expect worst-case scenario, because you will occasionally, if not regularly, get back. Which is six people that rent a house, call their other friends who have come to town to come on over and party. Well, there goes the regular folks, peace and quiet. We see it play out in other neighborhoods on many weekends in this town. I make note that the mayor said at council chambers on November 4th that he had received forty-some emails in favor of Bailey Trails, and he seemed pleased with that response. Last night, in council chambers, the mayor said he had received an additional twenty-six emails that were in favor of Bailey Trails, and again, he seemed pleased. Let's hope these many, many more signatures, 250-some, on the petition will hit home with the mayor, and the council, and the commission members, that the common man and common woman of Athens are greatly opposed. Yes, I went out to talk to the folks in my neighborhood, and here's why I discovered. Most folks were completely unaware of this controversy. Sixty-eight people were against tourist homes and signed the petition. Two people were in favor. Three people said they would need to read and think about it. Folks, mayor, planning commission, council members, that is 93% opposed. This was in two afternoons on Elmwood, Sunnyside, Hudson, and Lorraine. I think that tells a story. The answer is no. This is unacceptable.
Mr. Staff, thank you very much. Someone else care to speak?
I'm Charlotte Appleton, Congress Street, ex-city council person, ex-Orzonia Fields member, and currently on the Affordable Housing Commission. I'm here tonight because I've been on council two years, and the Airbnb tourist home situation was discussed then. What I do know, and that has not been discussed, is that we allow tourist homes in Athens on our business zones. The first gentleman that spoke, Mr. Gore, second gentleman, discussed that. His is in an area that is known for tourist homes. St. St. Snavon, how many houses do we have on St. St. Snavon that could be tourist homes?
Richland.
Yours is on Richland, right. But there is landlords above landlords. My family has stayed there when they've been in town. So I think that's important to point out, nobody's pointed that out, that we do allow tourist homes. The second very important point is that in the same Athens, we have 22% owner occupied Seventy-eight percent rentals. So when you go, and being on the Affordable Housing Commission, several reiterations have been up for the last four or five years, there are very few communities in this country that have that ratio. Generally, it's 73%, maybe you'll see 64%. We are very rare to have a community that is mostly rental. So when we look at our R1 residential housing stock, it's very rental. And then there's a price point from the affordability area. There are very few homes that a teacher, two teachers, might be able to be able, on a teacher's salary, live in, in the city limits of Athens. The third point I want to make is, yes, there have been, I've taken Airbnbs all across the world. There are rules to follow. You receive a on-site, you receive a comment, and then the person who stays there receives a comment. So it's all there in writing, which is nice. But I've also been told on the side by owners, please say you are friend of mine. Because they are operating illegally, if you look at Airbnb, or VRBO, or all the rest of them, it says right here, follow the rules of the municipality in which you are staying. Does anybody come after it? I don't know. We know that's a petition here in Athens in terms of code. So my big thing is certainly enforcement, and then the largest comment is, we really have so few housing of this kind of nature for R1 residential people in our community. And the planning commission and council seriously need to take that into consideration.
Thank you very much. Someone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Alan McCallum, I live at 229 East State Street, my wife is Carrie. I appreciate the commission for having this hearing tonight, and I appreciate everybody at all points coming together, we can have a whole town fun here. You know, I think, the first thing I'd like to point out, lots of things have changed. We live in the sharing economy. We share cars now, we share office space. You can share vacation, perhaps by orders picked up in those Airbnb. Share music. No, times have changed. The key is, when you bring change, how do you break control and keep what everybody wants here? Everybody wants a good community. I find it challenging that if I had a child who went out to Cleveland, and she's graduating, and I want to come down the night before, and want to live it up a little bit, celebrate, and I take in a hotel room. So now I stay in Parkersburg, I stay in Columbus, I make it one long, long day trip. Because guess what? And Jack, you talked about if you want to have some cocktail? Yeah, if my daughter or my son was graduating, heck yes, I'd be celebrating with a few cocktails. And I don't want to get a D W I, it's unresponsible. So what happens is, the responsible people, we don't have enough capacity, and this is one of the reasons we really support this. I hear all of the concerns, and they're absolutely valid. But what we don't know is what kind of abundance would come. I mean, we say, if this happens, this bad thing's going to happen. If this happens, the bad thing might happen. Well, if we do it well, these good things can happen as well. The economy can be stimulated. Right now, we don't have any hotel owners in here saying, don't do this. Because they know they're filled up on the big weekends anyway. And for people who are saying, well, you can just buy houses on speculation, we're just student housing business. I don't think that pencils out for Airbnb. But again, we can fear, you know, this, if, you know, we want... But I'll tell you something, we have done it with a house match to ours. Probably opening myself up for arrows right now, but we have done this on occasion. What we're trying to find out, can you do it in harmony with the community? At one point, somebody came to me and said, oh, try to get your house rezoned. I said, I wouldn't do that. I don't want to rezonate. I'm in an R1, now we're on East State Street, so a lot of traffic, noise, and everything else, it's much like a commercial district, a lot of attributes, one residential for another. So the thing is, we're licensed to do it, in the house we do it, and the way we've interpreted and understand regulation, we're allowed to do. You've got to go for a certain amount. We're in support of all the concerns that people have brought up in this meeting. And then when I reread the papers today to get ready for this, it said, if there are problems, you lose your permit. I think that's beautiful. If people don't conform to a proper code of conduct, they should be out. We should do this by allowing choices, and then when something goes wrong, then we address wrong, not the fear of, oh my God, this is going to happen, and that's going to happen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would someone else care to speak?
My name is Jonathan Anas, I live at 56 Mile Street, Athens, Ohio, in an R1. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the commission. And I know as commission members, you're often aware of what the ordinance R0819 presented to you. But as you know, the complementary piece to this ordinance is a document drafted by city council that would establish the rules and regulations that would govern the home stay and tourist establishments. That document was not presented to city council. I've asked myself, why maybe you got two? The document, that document, is what we refer to as devil's end of details. Title 1113, Short Term Rentals, Bed and Breakfast Home Stays and Tourist Homes. And under Title 1113, I see some issues. Number one, an additional category was created, nonprofit home stay. So one corporate nonprofit license can be obtained for ten voluntary home stay establishments. Each voluntary home stay establishment must be inspected, hold liability cover to follow established guidelines under Title 1113. Is that the case? Or is it that, as someone mentioned to me, only the nonprofit corporation that holds a license has to adhere to this? I don't know. And put the code office handle all the inspections of each voluntary home stay where it is inspected. That's ten, and if there's two, that's twenty. Number two, that host in a home stay and a manager of tourist home may only be onsite 51% of the year. Who will monitor this? Will this be left to this burning neighbors to observe and report to the code office? On weekends, could it be called? Once again, the details are not available. Number three is an interesting category. If you've seen this document, and it is marked draft, if you get it from corporate council, under category analyzing regulations, this is a particular statement that was noted as deleted. Number 1113043, the operation shall not be used by the public for hosting or receptions. Okay, so this applies to all those three establishments. But does this mean that receptions can be held at these establishments? If it doesn't say you can't do it, can you? What would be the limits on such a situation? It's not described in detail. And I guess, was it ever between a party and a reception is the question that I asked. Okay, number four, parking. One example would be an owner occupied, single-family in R1. It would be well-controlled requires two parking places for each dwelling unit, I'll go quick, plus one for each additional renter. As a home stay, this dwelling would be a change of use? Has anyone thought about that? If there were a grandfather parking situation, it would be lost. So, how many houses in our R1 neighborhoods could accommodate parking for four guests, plus the two required for single-family unit against our tourist home, that's also six? I do not believe that the details in Title 1113 are sufficient to regulate the code changes as recommended in R0819. Such drastic changes to the R1 neighborhood's structure surely deserves more thoughtful consideration. Members of the planning commission, you're being tasked with a daunting situation. I hope you choose wisely.
Thank you very much. Someone else care?
Good evening, my name is Martha Hatzit, I live at 285 Grove Street, I live in an R1 section. I have two children, who have grown up in Athens, and we have lived in this area with them knowing that there are student rentals around us, whenever you fall into the middle, and for the most part, if you spring in about some of the barnyard round residences. But with that said, we know who the renters are. I stay in Airbnbs, I like them very big, but I don't want one next door to me. I want to know who lives next door to my children. I want to know who's come to drink next door to my house. I do not oppose having Airbnb in Athens in any way, shape, or form. I do oppose having a next door to me in an R1 section. We've talked about parking. Let me explain to you that I live on an end of Grocer Street where there is no on-street parking. There isn't a place for someone to have an additional two to three cars, because there is only traffic. On this further end of Grocer, where there is some on-street parking, it becomes a congested mess. We've called food enforcement, we've called the city of Athens during Halloween, homecoming, and all the weekends where there is a high traffic timeframe in Athens. They can't come. They can't come and tow cars away through blocking driveways where people think it's okay to park because nobody's going to tow me. We don't have the resources, we have not bought through this enough. I live in an R1 because that's where I chose to live, that's where I chose to live. My house was a rental. I've taken my property, I have turned it around, I've cleared tremendous amount, and I value that. And I'm not saying anyone who runs an Airbnb or has rental doesn't value it, but I think that we have a zone, and we have an area of Athens, that that's an appropriate area to have additional rentals for short term. So I ask you to consider families, I ask you to consider rentals to rent to students and families who are here year-round, or at least two or four night ones. Because they have children, or they have parents. We have both on our street. On Grocer, I have very elderly neighbors, and I have young children next door to me. Having people coming and going on a weekly basis doesn't tell me who's in my neighborhood. Having them there to party, which I have no problem with, I grew up in Athens. All about moving, all about homecoming, all about Halloween. But I would prefer that there be further thought put into this progress, or this process, before we just say, yes, our neighborhood can be opened up to short-term rentals. So I would ask that you consider that.
Thank you very much. Would someone else care to come forward? Sam?
Hi, I just wanted to take a couple seconds to...
Could you first say your name and your address?
Yeah, my name is Sam, I live at 28 Elmwood. And I moved to Elmwood from Franklin Avenue, because Franklin Avenue is a little too crazy at night. So I tripled my taxes, and I tripled my mortgage, so I could sleep at night. Now I'm a little bit concerned that Elmwood might be changing. And I would just like to say, in my opinion, I think we should have areas of town that are zoned for business, and we should have areas of town that are zoned for people that want to raise a family and walk to school and sleep at night. That's just my view. The other aspect of this that I think is maybe being not seen as so obvious, is that the housing market in Athens right now is changing. Enrollment at the university is starting to go down, and kind of the rough... Enrollment at the university is starting to go down, and kind of the rough-shaped properties on the outside, the value is starting to go down. If I owned one of those properties that were lower value, lower quality, I could hold on to it and use it as an Airbnb, or I could sell it, and it could be an affordable house for somebody who's never before been able to move in from the outside. So we start to have a more diverse, robust community. If we don't set up a situation where it could be a profit center for the people who are really involved. So, those are my two views. If we can keep an area of town for people that wanna have a family, and an area of town for people who wanna have a business, that would make me happy. Thank you.
Would someone else care to come forward?
My name is Jan Hodson. I own my home at 45 Gray Drive, in an R1 neighborhood, and have lived there for 27 years. I chose to purchase there because the R1 zone is defined as owner occupied and long-term rental. I think it's widely recognized that those two characteristics have a positive effect on the nature of neighborhoods. There has been no demonstrable proof that there is a great need for additional tourist homes in this town. According to an estimate by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, our city's tourist accommodations are only 72% occupied annually. And a quick look at Airbnb and VRBO websites show that many tourist accommodations are located just outside the city limits. Given all of this, why is it necessary to provide tourist homes within an R1 neighborhood? If you allow this, you're clearly sacrificing the property rights of permanent, full-time, tax-paying citizens who live and vote here, in an effort to provide rooms for tourists who are only interested in a place to stay for a weekend, and not invested at all in the health of the neighborhood in which they are staying. I ask that you preserve the R1 neighborhoods in this city by not allowing the presence of tourist homes.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to come forward also, and just sign your name and address. Would someone else care to speak?
As we've been pointing out, the OU involves more employment, probably in the next 10 years, and a lot of small landlords who have several properties, and maybe have a SPA, repair fee, electric fraud, those kinds of things. And find that they don't have as much use for that, so that they approach some of these LLCs or nonprofit who has access to tenants, and say, we'll manage it for you. You know nothing about this. We can run ads in Cleveland, we can run ads on Facebook, we can bring people in, and profits, whatever. That may already have happened. The thing is, we don't know what's gonna happen. I've watched over 40 years, City Council makes sweeping changes, went on to a clean committee for 10 years, and I said, why don't we try this in a four-block area, and see if it works? And then, and fine-tune it, and then roll it out to other neighborhoods, and eventually the whole city. So, no, then we'd roll it out the whole city, and of course, it would fall apart. So if you ask for recommendations, what about going more slowly on this? I don't think many people have mentioned problems with R3 neighborhoods. Maybe roll it out for the business in R3 neighborhoods for a year, and see what happens. And then, if all goes well, and people don't use it, then we maybe enlarge R2, and eventually perhaps R1, but I would prefer not. I went to the Code Office today to find out about unenforceable laws. The City Council has passed numerous unenforceable laws, for three people, three empty people per house. Code has no way of enforcing that. Many of us have tried to enforce it, and it's almost impossible. So, if I were a landlord, and I had a marginal house, why would I want to rent it to three people, when I could call it a tourist home and rent it to six people? Yes, it says 30 days, but how do you enforce that? They go to Cleveland for the weekend, visit their parents, and come back, and that's the next 30 days, so they can stay there permanently. And the Code would not know, and not be approved. So, why don't I go more slowly, and open it up only to perhaps business in R3 neighborhoods, and see what happens for a year? See if the Code Office can enforce it, see if they have a staff, see if they can find ways to make it work. And if they're comfortable, we fine-tune it, and then we maybe scale it down to R2, and then perhaps move it there. So I'm against unenforceable laws. I'm seeing, why do we put these things on the books when we can't enforce them? So, that's my suggestion to you, is tourist homes in R1 neighborhoods are gonna probably turn into permanent homes, and for six people, instead of just three.
Would someone else care to come forward?
On January 15, 2017, the Athens News acknowledged what many of us have known for a long time. It said, "Test force confirms Athens has a housing shortage." Quote, "There is not enough affordable residential housing in Athens." The article went on to quote five recommendations that had been proposed, and then tell me two of them. The first one said, "There are five recommendations," I'm giving you the first one, "that the university and the city should partner with community organizations to promote an increase in affordable housing stocks, in the range of $115,000, $125,000 to $250,000." That was considered an affordable range for housing. Second, they said, "That the city should make changes in its code enforcement, and improvements to make Athens more attractive to home buyers, especially residential homes for single-family buyers." Mayor Patterson agreed. I quote him, "Housing stock is inflated due to rentals that eliminate significant portions of single-family in the rental market." Now, I am here tonight because I know that Mayor Patterson was right. The demand for rentals from university students, and now from short-term visitors or transient units, raises rents and inflates the price of projects. That means it reduces the number of single-family housing units that are available to long-term residents. I am here tonight because years ago, I helped petition the city to rezone the Near Eastside neighborhood where I lived. It had been an R2 district, and the Athens had been rezoned to R1. The city complied, and the zone is now R1, but it is a small 5x5 block area in the Near Eastside neighborhood, and it has permanent residents, and it also has 179 rental projects. Now, I do not want my R1 area to be unofficially rezoned, or spot zoned, to the residential R3 multifamily housing, or perhaps even B1 neighborhood business. So, now I verge to study the problems that have occurred in cities all over the country, the reduction of long-term rental housing, long-term residential housing, the proliferation of houses in neighborhoods that do become large houses, the proliferation of problems, noises, trash, etc.
We're gonna have to, yeah, we have our allotment.
I'm gonna ask you then, what I've asked you before. Are tourists more important in Athens than long-term residents?
Thank you very much. Okay, thanks a lot. Would someone else care to speak? Would someone else care to speak?
Can you sign in, please?
My name is Karen Lee, if you can hear. Yep. I'm ready to speak. My name is Karen Lee, I live at 55 Grove Street, in Athens, in an R1 zone. I would like to take a different tack, and address the Athens Comprehensive Plan, which we've got, right? And its role in today's discussion, for the resolution before the Planning Commission. A new comprehensive plan has not yet been adopted, but its vision statement and several of its guiding principles have been published. With regard to housing specifically, the guiding principles include two points. One, we will highlight and build on the historical and cultural assets that make Athens one of a kind. And two, we will nurture our high-quality neighborhoods and expand affordable and accessible housing. Since a new comprehensive plan is not yet in fact in order, I feel it is incumbent on us to recall what the city endorsed in 2007 with regard to zoning and housing issues. I will limit myself to some of the paragraphs that, in the 2007 Comprehensive Plan, that prefer to focus on the Eastside neighborhood, but generally, they extend to other residential neighborhoods with some quirks, depending on whether it's Westside or Southside. Okay, so, this is what the Comprehensive Plan said about the Eastside neighborhood, as said in both of them. "It is a mature neighborhood that should be preserved as a low-density, owner-occupied, single-family neighborhood. Many of the older, larger homes with unique architectural features are along the western part of the neighborhood close to East State Street." Thank you, and historic places to the neighborhood. The city should target this area as the neighborhood conservation area. One, maintain predominant low-density residential zoning of R1 with strict enforcement. Two, discourage the expansion of R3 zoning, that sounds like tourist homes to me. And three, discourage any expansion of commercial zoning along East State Street. This neighborhood, due to its age, architectural styles, and the area's crowdedness, is eligible for placement on the National Register of Historic Places. And I'd like to update that to say that 62 houses along the section of East State Street and the upper section of Elmwood Place are now on the National Register of Historic Places. So in considering the resolution currently before the City Planning Commission, I hope that members will factor into their decision, the point the City of Athens has committed in its Comprehensive Plan to supporting single-family housing in our six residential neighborhoods. This is true of in the 2007 Currently Operative Plan, and in the principles, supporting single-family housing in the new, on the books, but not implemented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would someone else care to come forward, who hasn't spoken yet? Is that it? No one else, first-time people?
Email.
We have, yes.
I have questions.
Sure.
I have a question, if you would just interject me in place. Mr. Stone asked earlier that if people had questions to, before the Planning Commission, to help look at this process, they bring those up. I have about 12 questions. Thank you. That, my example, for the Planning Commission, would you accept these and make some comments around?
Sure.
Any suggestions, Mary? Did I ask specifically for suggestions?
Suggestions and questions.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
We're gonna run, we can run until 8 o'clock. If there's a couple other people who wanna make a second address, very briefly, like two minutes, that would be okay. Why don't you go ahead, since you, two minutes, and we'll run to no later than 8 o'clock then, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Sherman, 3 North May Avenue, Athens, R1. I just wanted to say that I, you all have answered my first question, which was, what's all the fuss about? I was unaware that you were, there's the thought that people are gonna buy houses and turn them into, whatever these tourist homes are, or whatever, Airbnb's. I, you know, like, I'm sorry, who's gonna pay $400,000 to live next door to Sam, wherever he went, and turn that into Airbnb's? It would take years to recruit their money. But aside that, running an Airbnb is not easy. It's every single day. And Airbnb as a corporation is so strict, and so precise, that I can't write a review until the person writes a review, and, and the people that I rent to are so much better than long-term renters. I can't even tell you, they come in, they sleep, they visit their kid, and they, at the time, they don't even use the kitchen. They are, as somebody said, they're, you know, they're respectful, they're kind, I mean, honest stuff. Have you noticed a lot more parking on our street? Because I've been doing an Airbnb since I couldn't get year-round, I only went that way, because I couldn't get year-round rentals. And I had to, well, it was in January. January, we all have. Right, and then, and then I rented to the Fulbright Scholars, and they went into the middle of September. Now who I do? So, it's just a matter of helping pay all the renovations that I put into these two houses. And then the last thing I wanted to say was that, our house was built as a rooming house. Every door in that house still has a number on it, so, including the two places that are rent. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for answering my question. I was unaware that people were thinking of buying, buying houses to put into Airbnb's.
Thank you very much. Jack, did you have something? Are you done? You good?
I can't resist, I'm gonna go ahead and say this. I've been in front of the Planning, I've been in front of the Planning Commission twice, in front of City Council three times. I'm against this, we all know that. But here's what I've said to Council, here's what I want to say to you folks, here's what I want everybody in the city of Athens to hear, hopefully read in a newspaper. You can have your bed and breakfast in your R zones, if it's all your B zones, your R3 zones, your R2 zones, and maybe possibly theoretically, in the main thoroughfares, as they pass through the R1 zones, without this infiltrating into the neighborhoods where the older folks, and the kids, and the pets are. I cannot believe that the demand is here today, or the demand is coming down the road, that the demand will be so great, that the B zones, the R3 zones, and the R2 zones can handle the load of these tourist dollars that we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely, you have some.
I have one other question for the Commission. Have you seen, because I love, you know, the rules of the Airbnb's that you're referring to, because I think that's very beneficial to them, I don't know if they are seeing about that. about that. Because that's a control, and that's what you're looking for. And I just see opening everything wide up when you don't know, really don't have a hold on what's happening.
It's a sense of community in an R1 neighborhood, where there are families, students, and yes, we work together for both. But I think it's important to understand that we're looking at this from an economic standpoint, what will be beneficial for our community for short-term rentals. I think that we have the capacity to do that without intruding on our neighborhoods, on R1 areas. I think that there are already established rentals in some R1 neighborhoods there, like that are some included in. But on a daily basis, I have a fairly good idea of who is in that rental, and if I need to have the reassurance, I can contact the homeowner, or I can contact the renter for issues, when things may come up as opposed to someone who's there for a weekend, or there for 10 days, or there for a group fest, or whatever. They may be in for a short-term issue. So I ask that you consider neighborhood and economic development as two separate issues, because I think we have the ability to do both, but not necessarily in an R1 section.
Thank you very much. Can you, since you're speaking first, this is your first time, can you just state your name and address, please? Thanks.
My name is Josh Ratcliffe. I actually live at 22 Curtis Street, so I'm not even anywhere near most of your homes. I just wanted to caution a couple things in this process as, as I am deeply involved in the local real estate sales community. Affordable housing is, A, few and far between, and I agree. Part of that problem is that what your idea of affordable and normal people's ideal of affordable, completely separate things. Eastside affordability for most people is nonexistent. We just don't see it. It's already out of the median, not because of the prices of the homes, but because of the location of floodplains, because of just numerous features in this situation. Let alone sticking a rental in your backyard. I'm not necessarily for or against one way or another in this process, but if I have a basement bedroom with an efficiency kitchen in it, and I would love to have somebody come and stay there for a weekend when I know it's time for them, and they need a place to be, I would like to be able to do that personally and legally, obviously. Parking issues, bedroom counts, three bedroom, three unrelated, however you want to define it, across the country right now is being challenged. So I would caution, anything that we pass in legislation at this point, look what's happening across the country right now and realizing that, A, it's probably not legal or won't be legal very soon for you to tell somebody what they can and can't put in their home, or how many people they can park in front or beside their house. Their kids are going to grow up, they buy the house with two people driving, and now they've got five. So you can't tell that family that their kids can't park on the street. It's, it's, it's a very messed up situation, but I understand the idea and the desire to regulate and the need for it, especially because I agree in one situation, I don't want somebody from Columbus who longer from Cleveland buying up 20 houses on the east side of Athens because they want the BNB's or VRBO's in our neighborhoods and not be able to manage it and live here and take care of our neighborhood. I completely understand that, and I definitely agree, but you can't have it both ways, and that's the tricky side of it. Watch what's happening across the country right now before we start passing legislation that we're going to have to change in the next year. And then you've got grandfather issues, and you've got, I just, I just ask you to check into that before we make any final decisions.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. Jane?
Well, I'd like to address an issue that Mr. Stone brought up. I was having a conversation with him. Mr. Stone sought permission for his short-term rental house on Richardson Avenue. Also, when the landlords wanted to use their second, some of their second apartments for short-term rentals, and at that point, the city that incorporates Simpson Avenue into part of the possibility of short-term rentals. So my question is, several years ago, city council established regulations and designations for bed and breakfasts. So we had Chris Paul Avenue, Simpson Avenue, I think Martin Union, Columbus Road, in Pizzastone, and in R3. I don't understand, and I don't know, maybe you don't, what brought this up? Because we already had, it took council, I remember the first time that Chris Paul introduced it, and the mayor said, oh, take that back, right? And so then it took months to finally get something with some need in it to present to council from the committee and for the mayor to approve. And so we had that already on the books. We have walkability places. You can walk from Simpson, you can walk from Richardson. We've been close, right? Columbus Road is a little tricky. Unionism. So what's the rush to bring forward into the close-in neighborhoods? I don't get it. Does anybody know? Are you going to answer the question? Am I allowed? No?
We were hoping you were going to answer our questions. That's why we had you come, so to give us suggestions and answer our questions, because we have plenty. So, thank you.
And, yeah, the two minutes are up on that, but thank you. Okay, I think we're over right now. I would like to thank everyone for coming in tonight. I would also like to tell you that I appreciate that, I feel like people conducted themselves in a civil manner on a controversial issue, and I applaud you for that, and thank you very much. So you'll be hearing about this more in our upcoming Planning Commission meetings. So with the work of the Athens Planning Commission done for tonight, this meeting stands adjourned.